Hello, and thank you for joining us. You're live with Senator Tom Livis. Tonight, we're talking about the mental hygiene closures. If you'd like to ask the Senator a question, please hit star three. Again, if you'd like to ask the Senator a question, please hit star three. Senator Livis, how are you doing tonight?
Manny, I'm doing great, and thank you and everybody who's participating in my live telephone town hall. It's been awhile since I've done one, and I look forward to answering the questions from all of our participants. This is Senator Tom Livis, and I want to thank you for joining me in this live telephone town hall meeting. We're gonna talk about a lot of things, but one of the things we're gonna talk about is the mental hygiene closures, the closures that are proposed for the Binghamton Psychiatric Center and the Broome Developmental Center. As you know, or may not know, and one of the reasons why we're doing this this evening, I put a plan together that I think can freeze the closing of these facilities, and that's something that we wanna do so that we can work things out. But I also wanna answer your questions on anything else. Please press star three to ask me a question. This is Senator Tom Livis, and thank you for joining us on our telephone town hall this evening. We'll be happy to go to some questions very soon, but I wanna do a survey too this evening for all of you. And this sounds pretty simple, but I know there are people that feel differently. So, do you think we should keep the Greater Binghamton Health Center and the Broome Developmental Center open? If you believe we should, press one. If you believe we should not, press two. Again, if you think we should keep the Greater Binghamton Health Center, which is the Binghamton Psych Center and the Broome Developmental Center, open, press one for yes, and press two for no. This is Tom Livis. You've joined my live telephone town hall. We're gonna talk about my plan to keep the Binghamton Psychiatric Center and the Broome Developmental Center open. I've introduced legislation to freeze the closure, and that legislation we will pass in the Senate in January, and it would freeze the closures until April first of 2015, which would give us plenty of time to do what we need to do to try to come up with an alternative plan. Manny, do we have any callers coming in?
Yes, we have a lot of callers. We'll try to get to as many as possible. Again, if you'd like to ask the Senator a question, please hit star three. Right now, we're going to David Stiegl in Norwich. David, you're on with Senator Tom Livis.
Hey, David.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, good. I hear some activity in the background there.
Grandchildren.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Go ahead, sir.
My question is, if the facilities do close, and I hope they do not, what are the plans to provide care for the residents that are currently in the facilities, and how will they be assisted in their further treatment?
David, great question. I mean, that's what we're asking the state to provide us, which they have not. That's been a question that I've asked, and I've asked it time and time again, that if you're gonna close these facilities, what kinda treatment is gonna be provided? We know, number one, that our local hospitals can't take anymore. We know that county governments are full. We know that there's not enough services in the community. So, that's part of my overall proposal in trying to convince the governor and his staff that, you know, we need to keep these facilities open. We need to keep the children's unit open. We need to make sure that the dangerous pedophiles that are at the Broome Developmental Center are not let out into the community. So, these are the kinds of things that we're gonna be working on, and that I'm gonna be fighting very hard for. If you'd like to give me a call, press star three to ask a question. My name is Senator Tom Livis. You've joined my live telephone town hall. We had a survey earlier. We're asking the question, should we keep the Binghamton Psychiatric Center open and the Broome Developmental Center open? If you believe so, press one for yes, or press two for no. Manny, let's go to another caller.
Sure. Our next caller comes from Binghamton. We have Joyce on the line. Joyce, you're on with Senator Tom Livis.
Yes, Joyce.
Yes, Senator. First of all, I wanna thank you for putting out the bill on the freeze.
Thank you.
I think this, these closings have not been well planned. As far as we know, I am not understanding where there is any dollar amounts allotted to the community. They want the places closed, but however, I don't see any plan as to where these people at both centers are gonna be going into the community, and where is the money saved? How much?
Sure.
And where is the money to reimburse the community?
Joyce, these are all great questions. These are questions that I've, you know, asked the governor's people because, as you know, I created and helped draft the Community Reinvestment Bill a number of years ago. And that meant that when there was closure, the money is supposed to follow the client into the community. The state doesn't do that anymore, and they should because it's the law. We passed a law. I helped write that law, and the state ignores it. So, those are all good questions. We're gonna continue to ask those questions and more. And again, my goal is to go in and to try to keep both facilities open. I'm gonna do everything that I can, understanding that, you know, it will be a tough, tough debate. This is Tom Livis. I wanna thank you for joining my live telephone town hall this evening. And you know, before I go to the next caller, I just wanna say, you know, thank you to many of you. As I've continued to fight my battle with prostate cancer, many of you have been so kind in sending me emails and writing notes. And, you know, about two months ago, I had back surgery, and they helped deal with a problem I had from radiation four years ago, but I'm on the mend. I'm feeling better, and I'm off for this fight because we have to keep these facilities open. But I just wanna say thank you to all of you out there who have been so kind to me and my family, and the prayers, and they all count, and we take them very seriously. Manny, can we go to another caller?
Sure. Our next caller is from Binghamton. We have Fred. Fred, you're on the line with Senator Tom Livis.
Tom, it's great news to hear that you're doing better 'cause it's been a real concern, and we've been praying for you and our family.
Well, we appreciate that. We really do.
We really need you there, and it's a great service you do. And I know you've had some really rough times. I hope you keep continuing to get better and keep going.
Thank you.
One of the things I'm really concerned about is Broome Developmental.
Mhm.
These people in the LIT unit, a lot of them are criminals. They're mentally incapacitated criminals. They're not aware of what they do. They're arsonists. They're child abusers. They're rapists. And a lot of them have no comprehension of right and wrong and what's going on. But yet, right now, and they already have been being released into our communities. There being some of them put in apartments. A few months ago, one was let out, and within a week raped a woman in Binghamton.
That's what I heard, Fred.
Another one just a few weeks ago, yeah, another one just a few weeks ago, just went into Pennsylvania and did a burglary. He wasn't even out for a week.
Amazing.
And I have people that work there. I know people very well that work there. They're actually, they're changing their records. They're taking them because they're trying to fast-track everybody out into the community. They're changing their records. They're taking them off their psychotic drugs so that they look better for these private homes 'cause the private homes don't want the serious problems. So, they're actually changing their records.
Fred, I want you to know that I'm very much aware of it. This is something that I stressed in my letter to the governor. I was very upfront to him and told him that we had some real serious problems, and that we needed to deal with that. I agree with you, and they're serious people. They're arsonists. They're pedophiles. They're people that we don't want in the community, and that's what we're fighting to stop. And that's why I'm so adamant about this. So, we're gonna keep fighting it. Manny, what do we got here? If you wanna ask me a question, star three to ask me a question. We have a second survey question that I'm gonna go to in a little bit, but first, let's take a couple more callers.
All right. Our next caller comes from Green. We have Claire on the line. Claire, you're on the line with Senator Tom Livis.
Hi, Senator Tom.
Hey, Claire. How are you?
I'm doing okay.
Okay.
I was an aide, and I worked for the county, and I do very much appreciate you trying to keep them closed because they need to be in there for treatment. I'm all for it, but my question to you is about the Obamacare. Do you really feel...
Let me answer that for you. You know, Obamacare is a federal issue. It's not an issue that I'm getting involved in. I don't agree with it. I think there's a lot of problems with it, as we all know. And I would suggest, and I'm not trying to brush you off, Claire, but you should call Congressman Hanna's office. It's a Washington problem, and it's not something that we deal with at the state level. But in the meantime, for those of you who are working with me to try to keep these facilities open, press star three to ask a question. And if you'd like, we'll go to the second survey question, and this one is a little different. You know, in 2014 January, we will be starting the new legislative session. I would ask, what do you think the most important issue is? Should we hold the line on taxes? If you believe that, press one. Or should we be helping small businesses create jobs? If you believe that, press two. Should we be investing more in Binghamton University and Broome Community College? Press three. And should the DEC make a decision, one way or the other, on hydro fracking? Press four. Those are issues that'll be coming before us. Maybe you feel strongly about all of them, and if you do, you can press all four numbers. Manny, do we have any new calls coming in? We seem to have quite a few on the board.
Yes. Our next caller is from Johnson City. We have Mike from Johnson City. Mike, you're on with Senator Tom Livis.
Hello, Mike. Mike? I don't hear him.
Looks like we lost Mike, but we're rolling right through. How about Mary from Endicott? Mary, you're on with Senator Tom Livis.
Hi, Mary.
Hello, and I wanna thank you for your efforts to try and keep the facilities open
Thank you, Mary.
for Broome Developmental Center and the other centers regarding people that are there for a reason.
Mhm.
To me, I worry about the fact that there are so many of these people being lost in the cracks, and then they turn up shooting people, innocent eyes.
Well, they do...
And this could very well happen here, too.
Sure, yeah.
We've already had the Civic Center situation. And I am concerned that freezing it isn't going to be enough, freezing them from closing them. How do you feel that's going to work?
Well, what I'm doing, Mary, is putting in legislation that would force them to move no one or take no action till April first, 2015, so that we could work out a plan. See, right now, they're proposing closing these facilities quickly. They've already transferred people from the Broome Developmental Center to Albany. I want that to stop. I wanna freeze that. If we freeze that or put a moratorium on it, it gives us an opportunity to sit down with the administration and negotiate and try to keep these facilities open. Plus, I'm fighting because the southern tier will have no representation. All of the facilities will be across the thruway, none of the southern tier. This is Tom Livis, and we're having a live telephone town hall meeting. We're talking right now about keeping the Broome Developmental Center open and the Binghamton Psych Center. Certainly, this coming legislative session is going to be a busy one in Albany, and we asked the survey question, do you think we should hold the line on taxes? If you think we should, press one. If you think we should be helping small businesses create jobs, press two. And if, should we be investing in Broome Community College and Binghamton University? That's more than we have. Press three. And should the DEC make a decision, one way or the other, on hydro fracking? Press four. Those are our survey questions. The original survey question on the Greater Binghamton Health Center and Developmental Center came back. I think Manny, what, ninety-nine to one in favor of keeping them open? So, I believe we're on the right track there. We wanna preserve the thousand jobs in the community. We wanna do what's right in making sure that our residents are safe from folks who shouldn't be in the community, and then those who need the expert care. Manny, what do we got coming in?
Sure. We've got a call from Binghamton. This is Lucille in Binghamton. Lucille, you're on with Senator Tom Livis.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, Senator. How are you tonight?
I'm good, Lucille. How are you?
Good. I wanna thank you for trying so hard to do what you're doing for Binghamton.
Thank you very much.
You've so far done a very good job.
Well, you're sweet.
So, now, I'm retired, but look at all these people that will lose jobs. It's very bad. This community is very bad for jobs, for people, and you know it as well as I do. And they should keep something open in Binghamton. They must.
Well, that's why, that's why, Lucille, I'm fighting, to keep both facilities open. You know, the, I believe the Developmental Center alone has about a twenty-nine million dollar annual payroll, money that goes into the community. That's from six hundred and fifty employees or so. That's extremely important to us. As I've said time and time again, every job is important. It doesn't matter where the job is, what it is, but it is extremely important. And I just think we should do whatever we can to help people, you know, maintain those jobs. And plus, we need the facilities open. We need the care, and that's extremely important, and that's what we're fighting for. This is Tom Livis. You've joined my live telephone town hall. If you'd like to ask us a question, press star three. Even if we don't get to you tonight, and we'll try to get to as many as we can, you can leave your question on a recording at the end, and we'll definitely, and I promise you, as we have in the past, we will always get back to you with an answer to your question. Manny, can we take another caller?
Sure. Our next caller is from Bainbridge. We have Nancy on the line. Nancy, you're on with Senator Livis.
Nancy.
Oh, good evening. Hi there.
How are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you, and thank you for all the efforts that you put forth for those of us in our rural areas as well as the cities. With the closure of the Broome Developmental Center, you know, New York State's under heavy pressure to comply with the Olmstead Community Choice Acts. Something is going to change in this state to allow those that can be in the community to hopefully have the community-based supports that they need.
Which we, Nancy, which I've supported throughout the years. Yes.
Given that you want to freeze things to two, and that, by the way, would maintain jobs just in different settings, you know, and with different support structures. Given that you want to freeze things to 2015, what is the interim plan, if you have begun to think about one, to build up those community-based supports and services so that the state can step in and do the right thing and be compliant with the Olmstead Act and the cuts from that?
Let me, Nancy, let me answer that, and I know it's a little complicated for some of our listeners because they don't know what the Olmstead Act is. And the Olmstead Act is a federal law that basically says that at some point in time, states need to begin to open up community care facilities for people with disabilities, which we have been doing over the course of the last ten years. You know, I authored the Community Reinvestment Bill. I authored Kendra's Law. And I'm very much in favor of putting people into the community who can survive in the community. Right now, we don't have the community residences. We don't have the places in the community to take what they want to move from the Binghamton Psych Center at this point in time.
Absolutely.
And from the Developmental Center, we have some, as mentioned earlier, some very serious characters up there that we don't want in the community. So, there is a fine balance, and yes, what we're looking at is the state's supposed to give us a plan. The state's supposed to give us a plan. They have not given us a plan. And so, by putting a freeze on, this gives me and my colleagues enough time to ask a lot of questions and demand some of the answers that you requested. I appreciate your thoughts. Manny, do we have, let's take another caller. This is Senator Tom Livis. You've joined my telephone town hall, excuse me. And if you wanna ask me a question, press star three. Manny, who are we taking next?
Sure. Our next caller comes from Lisle. We have Ellen from Lisle. You're on line with Senator Livis.
Ellen, how are you?
Hi, Senator. It's an honor to talk to you.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm so happy that you're trying to save the mental health facilities around here. We need it so bad. But I wanna know, what else can we do as taxpayers? Should we start a campaign for the governor, or what should we do?
Well, that's a great question. You know, a lot of you have gone on my webpage, tomlivis.com, and you've signed the petition. I've got a petition. I've got over sixty-seven hundred people who have signed the petition. I think that's fabulous, and you can do that. And certainly, excuse me, don't be afraid to call the governor's office. You can go online and get a message to him. Believe me, they look at these things. He has local representatives. Call him and let him know that this is serious to us, and we don't wanna see these closures. So, I told the governor when he was here, a week or so ago, that this is a flawed plan. It's a plan that couldn't come at a worse time because of the number of jobs that could be lost. And if he hears it from residents, and he hears it from me and my colleagues, he'll take it much more serious, and feel free to pick up the phone and call him. Manny, let's go to some more callers. We have quite a few callers coming in.
Sure. Our next caller comes from Binghamton. We've got Jean from Binghamton. Jean, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Jean, you're on the line. Hi, Jean.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator, for taking the call, and I appreciate all your efforts. My question is this. With the school killings a year and a half ago, priority was set, federal and state, to implement changes with mental health and increase funding and gather in more programs to prevent the killings.
Mhm.
And I find the violence, et cetera.
Mhm.
But I find that that money is not there. I happen to run an in-home mental health program.
Okay.
And there's not subsidy for it that I can wear up.
Let me say this to you, because I wanna answer your question, but yet, I wanna, we have quite a few callers coming in, and I wanna try to get as many as we can. The federal government promised money after that, and the states have not seen it. And a lot of that is pass-through money that comes from the feds to the states. For some reason, that money has never made it to us. That's something you may wanna reach out to our congressional reps to ask about. I'll do the same. My staff is here. We're making notes tonight. And I will also reach out to the congressman's office and Senator Schumer and Gillibrand and find out why that money hasn't come. Thank you for your call. Manny, let's go to the next caller. If you wanna ask me a question, press star three to ask me a question. This is Senator Tom Livis, and you're joining my live telephone town hall. Manny, who's our next caller?
Sure. Our next caller is from Binghamton. We have Bruce on the line. Bruce, you're on with Senator Tom Livis.
Hello. My name is Bruce Rowe. I've been in the mental health system now for about twenty years, and I was having a complete breakdown about twenty years ago.
Mhm.
And I've got an extended amount of help from mental health. I was in Memorial, and then I went to Krems.
Correct.
Then I went to an alcohol rehab, and then I went to ACBC, and I'm getting help with therapy now.
Good deal.
And I'm also getting help with Project Upwith, and it really astounds me because Project Upwith is a very good organization that's doing a lot. They used to help mental health patients that didn't have cars with getting groceries, but then their funding got cut. They keep cutting back the funding for Project Upwith. And as far as I know, they do more to help people with the drop-in center, combined with Project Upwith, with the Beacon and the Sunrise Club, then a lot of other organizations.
Bruce, let me just, let me just say this. Congratulations to you, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I do have a lot of calls that we wanna get to. And the fact that you would share your positive experiences with the mental health programs that have helped you, I think is tremendous. I wanna thank you for calling, and that's why we're trying to preserve a lot of these programs because they will help people like yourself. Thank you. That took a lot of courage for him to call. Manny, let's keep going here. I wanna get as many calls in as we can, and...
Sure. Our next caller is from Deposit. You have John from Deposit. John, you're on the line with Senator Tom Livis.
Good evening, Senator.
Hello. Hey, John.
John, you know me.
Is this, is this the mayor?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure. I recognize the voice.
That's exactly who it is. We need these facilities. Local and county governments cannot afford these services, and it's a state responsibility, and I think really, right now, it's underdone. Mental health relates here in this area to crime and drug abuse, and it's really underdone. So, what you're fighting for is really part of what we need. We need more of this stuff, and, you know, our last murder was with a hammer. And our governor seems to be taken with gun control, and that's not where it's at. It's where you are right now. That's where the problem is at. It needs money. It needs facilities, and there's people out there that need help. You know, we've had attempted suicides in Deposit. I think we had four in a month, some months ago, and these people were out walking around the next day. They're not getting the help they need. So, we need more of what you're fighting for. Not where it's at right now. We need more of it. And I appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thank you, sir, and we're gonna keep...
You sound great. You sound great, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm back at it. I'm feeling good, and it's because of a lot of good people out there who said a lot of prayers, and, you know, we're still going strong, and I wanna thank you for that. But that's why we're fighting for these facilities, and that's why we wanna keep them open. Manny, let's keep going. We have a lot of callers coming. I'm really impressed with the number of calls that are coming in.
Sure. Our next caller is from Green in Shenango County. We have Dorothy. Dorothy, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Hi, Senator Livis. This is Dorothy.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to God, I am good, and I've heard you talking. I just admire your courage and...
Oh, you're sweet.
...picking up another fight because I was diagnosed with a very aggressive cancer three years ago, and they said it would be back in two years, and it'll be three years in December, so...
Well, God bless you. God bless you. That's wonderful.
I know what mentally and everything that...
Sure.
So, thank you so much.
Well, these other fights take my mind off it, so it's a good thing.
I know.
What was your question? Thank you for your kind words.
My question is, I have an autistic grandson in a group home, and they get a lot of services from Broome Developmental for the patients and the clients in the group home. What will happen with a group home? I assume that that's gonna affect that, too, if Broome Developmental gets closed.
Well, that's a good question. I mean, we're not getting the answers that we want from state government, and that's kinda what I'm pushing for. That's why I'm asking for the freeze. We want those services to continue, and if there are gonna be closures and if there are gonna be transfers to the community, and a lady talked earlier about that, you know, I'm all for it, but let's talk about how do we continue the care? And that's really what's missing here, is how do we continue the care? And it's very frustrating. That's why we're fighting to do everything we can. Manny, let's go to another caller, and Dorothy, thank you for that call. Let's see if we can take a few more, but let me, survey question number two. We asked you, what is important, holding the line on taxes? Thirty percent said yes. Helping small business? Nineteen percent said yes. Investing in Binghamton University and Broome Community College? Eight percent said yes. And interestingly enough, forty-three percent of you said it's time for the state to make a decision, one way or the other, on fracking. Now, I'm gonna give you one last survey question before we go to the next series of callers. This is gonna be more of a fun one. What do you think the most helpful state agency in New York is? Now, I'm sure for some of you, you're wondering, what do you mean, a helpful state agency? Is it, one, the Department of Health? Press two if you think it's the Department of Transportation. Press three if you think it's the Department of Motor Vehicles. Press four for the Department of Taxation and Finance. And if it's none of those, just press five. A little bit of fun here as we kinda wind down in our calling. But Manny, let's take some more callers. We can probably stay on the line for five or ten more minutes here. Let's see what we can do.
Sure. Our next caller is from Binghamton. We have Samuel. Samuel, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Hi, Senator.
Hi there.
You are no doubt aware of the murder that occurred in Virginia yesterday when a state senator, running for governor,
I saw that.
his son was released from a mental institution because they didn't have enough funds to keep him in.
They couldn't keep him there. That's correct.
They didn't have the funds to keep him there. He, by no means should have been released. He was released. He came out. He stabbed his father and then killed himself.
Yes.
And are you using this incident to illuminate what could happen here?
You know, I haven't, but it certainly, it can be part of the discussions because this is all part of what we're trying to do here. When I sit down with the governor's people, I can use this in probably a hundred other circumstances that have taken place because this is exactly one of the things we're talking about. Now, when you don't have enough facilities, you don't have enough beds, if you close these facilities, even our local hospitals said that they cannot take any inpatient activity. United Health Services told me that they pay now an additional six million dollars a year, and that they can't afford anymore. A Lord's Emergency Room can't take anymore. So, that ties into exactly what you're saying, and the fact that this case in Virginia, if you don't have facilities, and you close them, and you don't have inpatient facilities where you can take people in, or emergency facilities that can take them in for mental health, which we're not going to have, then you've got a real problem. You know, in 2006, I opened up the children's unit. It was closed in 1990. Over a hundred and eighty adolescents have come through that unit on an annual basis. We've got fifteen, sixteen beds up there. Parents are thrilled with the work that they do. The staff does an outstanding job, and we need to keep that open. We need to have that here in the southern tier. Manny, let's go to another caller.
Sure. Our next caller is from Conklin. We have Nancy from Conklin. Nancy, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Hi, Senator Livis.
Hi, Nancy.
My question is this. Personally, I'm familiar with a family that had a young teenager in crisis. The current facilities we had at that time, they couldn't get him seen. Um, finally, he was seen at Binghamton, uh, and sent to Binghamton Psychiatric Center, but this is my question. Um, when you have a loved one that has a problem like this, I mean, these parents have jobs, they have other children. Um, they were trying to deal as best they could with this crisis situation with their son. And what provision can, will be made for these families if they have to send their child to Utica? How, um, how can they even-
I'm, tha- tha- it's, it's-
Like, and if a child is in, or a teenager, or anyone really, is in crisis-
Sure. Nancy, it's unacceptable to me. I agree with you.
Where will, where will they go?
Well, it's unacceptable to me, Nancy, and that's why-
Yes.
In two thousand, in two thousand and six, I was able to get money from, uh, the state to open the children's unit again because of this exact reason. Uh, I had, um, I can't tell you the number of parents that would call my office. Um, I had friends that were involved. Uh, I had people who were desperately in need of services for their children, and, and there was nowhere to go. And then, uh, when they shipped them off to Utica, it became an even bigger burden because what happened was now the families, uh, as you said, th- th- they have to go to work here. Uh, they would have to take time a- and go to Utica and, and see their son or daughter, or loved one. And I'm telling you that, that's the one aspect of this that is totally unacceptable to me. Uh, I've let the governor know it directly. We reopen the children's unit because there is a drastic need for adolescent services here. And I am going to, uh, fight to keep everything going, but I'm gonna fight really hard on this one. Manny, let's take a couple more calls. Um, uh, we're kind of winding down. We, we, we buy so much time to, uh, be able to get out to you. And, uh, I think our, our time is up in, in, pretty much about ten minutes or so, so, uh, Manny, let's take the next caller.
Sure, our next caller is from Aspen. We have Kim from Aspen. Kim, you're on with Senator Livis.
Hey, Kim.
Hi, um, actually, the question I have is, um, on the appropriation of funds. Um, I had seen a document, uh, from the DOT, uh, about a year and a half ago. And in it, it, uh, it mentions like the extreme costs, um, for, uh, creating the infrastructure, for, um, the ro- the road and bridge infrastructure for gas drilling. And how that, and it specifically mentions how that would actually, uh, take away from other public programs. Um, and would, and would just create-
Yeah, well, where, where, where did you s- you said you saw an appropriation. Where did you see this?
Um, it's on a document, uh, titled Transportation Impacts of Potential Marcellus Shale Gas Development.
Oh, i- i- it's, it's probably a proposal that, um, either Shenango County did, or maybe even the state did.
No, 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 that's just for the-
I'm sor- I, I lost there, Manny. What happened? Kim, you know what? I'm sorry, we lost you. Um, if, if you can stay on the line and at the end, you can leave a message to us, because I, I, I do, we do want to get back to you and answer your question. And, uh, it obviously, I, I don't think it's on any state document because nothing's been approved either way for, uh, uh, hydraulic fracturing. So, um, but it, but it could be on a document that, um, um, somebody was preparing to show, um, um, either why they were for or against it. But please, uh, at the end of the call, you'll get a chance to, uh, leave a message. Please do so, so we can get back to you. I'm sorry you got cut off. I don't know what happened. Uh, Manny, let's go to another caller. I'm so, I'm so sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry about that. Our next caller is from Binghamton. We have Christine from Binghamton. Christine, you're on the line.
Christine.
Okay. Hi, Senator Livis, this is-
Hi.
This is Christine.
Yes.
And I congratulate you for what you're doing for the Binghamton Psychiatric Center.
Mm, thank you.
But I'm concerned about the mental health clinic as well. Um-
Sure.
Today I found out that my therapist is, um, losing her job at the end of the year. So many others are. I know a lot of people who need these services, and I'm concerned. Is that in your plan of what to do for the community?
Ye- yes, it is, Christine. It's all part of, of how we're going to provide services, um, not only through the psychiatric center, but also community services. Because, as I said earlier, um, um, I was, I was the author of the original community reinvestment plan, along with several of my colleagues. Um, I believe that the money should follow the client. It hasn't done that in New York State. And when it doesn't do that, it's hard, uh, for mental health facilities to, to hire good people or good therapists. And so that would be all part of a plan that we would, we would put together. Thank you.
Yeah, well-
Manny, um, how we doing? We've got a lot of calls still coming in. We've got a busy night. Can we take a few more?
Absolutely. Our next caller is from Delaware County. We've got Brian from Hancock. Brian, you're on the line.
Oh. Fabulous. Ryan from Hancock. How's everything in Hancock?
Good. How are you?
I'm good, sir. Good, good.
My question is, what's taking the state so long to approve gas drilling? We see it going on all across the border in Pennsylvania.
Yeah. Well, I, I asked Governor- I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
And, uh- I have a, a brother that works for a company, uh, down there in Pennsylvania that installs well pads or pipelines. And, uh-
I, um-
They have seen no problems.
Well, you know, we're, we're waiting for a decision, then, like I said earlier, um, um, one way or the other, we need a decision. We can't just keep delaying it. And when the governor was in town, he said that there would be a decision made next year. Uh, hopefully, that's gonna be true, and, um, however the decision is made, um, we'll live with it and move on. But right now, there has, uh, has been no decision. Uh, Manny, let's take a few more calls before we wind down tonight.
Sure, our next caller is from Endicott. We have Sheila from Endicott. Sheila, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Hi, Senator. Thank you for taking my call.
Hi there.
Hi. My question is, um, I'm really enraged to think that the government would even think about closing these mental health facilities.
Mhm.
If in fact, we need more.
Sure.
And why, my question is why, where is the money coming from to expand the jail? Five point six million. When that, those people-
Is that, is that the Broome County Jail, um-
Yes.
Sheila, um, I, I'll, I'll answer your question the best of my knowledge, because it is a county project and, and I'm not familiar. I saw it on the news, just like you did. Um, I, I think they're bonding for it. I think, uh, I think there's bond money out there that they're bonding because they need, they need an expansion. But I'm not sure, but we can, we can find out for you.
But a lot of these people that are going in there need treatment, mental health and drug treatment.
Oh, there's no question. No question.
I mean, we need more, if anything, in this area. I can't understand-
If, if- If either of these two fac-
How the government would even-
It doesn't make any sense. You're absolutely right.
No, it doesn't.
If either of these two facilities close, the jails are going to be, the jails are gonna be jam-packed. So, um, you're spot on. Um, thank you for your call, and, um, um, you just make a very good point. Th- this is, this is the problem. Uh, and, and, and if you would just stay with me for a little bit here. Um, if you close these facilities, you put a burden on local governments, which means your local taxes are gonna go up. You, you, you break the back of the local hospitals and their emergency rooms because they can't handle it. You, you ruin the inpatient treatment facilities because they can't afford it. And the jails, the jails in all three of my, four of my counties, Broome, Tioga, Shenango, and Delaware, are just gonna be overcome. And, and that's what I'm fighting against. That's why we need to keep these facilities open. Um, I, I'm gonna go back to Manny before we close out here in a little bit. We're gonna take a few more calls. Um, survey question number three was, what do you think is the most helpful state agency, uh, in New York? Is it the Department of Health? Press one. Department of Transportation, press two. Department of Motor Vehicle, press three. Department of Tax, uh, I'm sorry, Department of Tax and Finance, press four. Or if it's none of the above and it's some other one, just press five. I'd be curious to see what you come up with. Manny, let's take a few more calls.
Sure, our next call comes from Binghamton. We have Terry from Binghamton. Terry, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Terry.
Hello, Tom, how are you?
Hi Terry.
I'm so glad to hear you're doing better.
I'm good. Hey, how are you, Terry?
I'm good. I'm, I-
I know, I know this is, I only, I only get the name Terry that comes up, but I know who this is.
(laughing) Good. Well, Tom, the, the main burning question is what can we do to help you? Because I work in the school district now, and I know the families that you're talking about that have relatives-
Mm.
-and parents that are, you know, using that facility, and we really are so excited that you're fighting for it. And of course, my second question has to do with fracking. Like, we need to make a decision and move on. We have three in college, so we need some decisions made for jobs in our area.
Sure. Yep. Yep, yep.
And to make sure we're taking care of mental health in Binghamton. We see it in the school district, how much trouble is in the families, and we really are so excited that you're fighting this.
Terry, let me, let me tell you. First off, you could tell people to go on, on, on my webpage, tomlivis dot com, sign my petition, but also-
Great.
Call the governor's office. There's an eight hundred number to the governor's office, email the governor's office. It's very simple to do. Let them know you're from Broome County. Let them know you're from the southern tier. Let them know you want the facilities open. Um, he needs to hear from people.
Okay.
And for the rest of you that are still on the line, and I know we still have several thousand on the line, uh, please email the governor's office or call him. Uh, as far as hydro fracking, I'm with you. Uh, I want a decision one way or the other. It's, it's, it's-
Yep.
It's getting a little old for everybody, and, uh, either the state has to step up to the plate and say yes or no. Um, and, and just make a decision. Uh, that way, people can go on with their lives, one way or the other, and, uh-
Right.
If you like the decision, you can, you can, um, you know, enjoy it, and if you don't like it, I guess you can fight it. So, you know, just like we do every other issue that comes before us, but, um, you're right. It's just, uh, the delay, delay, delay. I don't know how long you have to study something that they're already doing in, in, in a ton of other states. And i- if you, if you don't want to do it, and, and you feel that it's unsafe, fine, make a decision. Uh, if you feel that it's safe, then make a decision.
Right.
So, Terry, thank you very much for calling. It's great to hear your voice.
You're welcome.
Right, bye-bye.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Bye-bye. Um, Manny, uh, we're, we're almost out of time here. We're approaching eight o'clock. Can we sneak in two more callers?
Absolutely. Our next caller is from Vestal. We have Penny from Vestal. Penny, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Hi Penny.
Hi, Senator, how are you?
I'm good, Penny. How are you?
I'm good. I worked at the psych center in the eighties when we were forced to put our patients out into the community.
Mhm.
Um, our community wasn't ready for them, and our community really hasn't recovered from our patients being out in the community.
Right.
Um, nobody wants these patients in their backyard. Um, we hear that all the time.
Mhm.
Where, you know, where are they going to go? What are we going to do if they close these facilities? I have a young child, and I use Greater Binghamton Adolescent Center.
Mhm.
Um, he's home now. He's doing good, but, you know-
Good for him.
It, uh, anything can trigger-
I understand.
A crisis, and-
Sure.
You know, like the other caller said, you know, I'm a single parent with other children. And if I have to travel with a unruly child to Utica, you know, we're talking about an unsafe situation. We need to keep these facilities open, and we need to keep Broome Developmental open for the jobs. The, the campuses themselves are self-sufficient. I mean, there's just so much that these places offer for the community, for their patients-
Mhm.
For their employees, for everybody.
Penny, I'm, I'm on the same-
But we need to learn-
Go ahead.
We need to learn from our mistake in the eighties. It didn't work then. It's not gonna work now.
Mhm.
And-
I, I, I-
Governor Cuomo needs to see this.
I agree, I agree.
We need to keep these open.
And I can't agree with you more, and, and as much as, as you depend on the children adolescent unit, I understand that, and that's why I reopened it in two thousand and six. And, and, and we'll fight like heck to keep that open, because we need it and, and we have to have it. Uh, thank you very much for calling and, and, um, and sharing your thoughts. Uh, Manny, I think we can take one more call. Uh, we still have a lot of people. For those of you who will not get in, um, you can, you can stay on the line. Uh, there'll be a recording. Please ask your question, and I apologize, because we only buy so much time, and I'm actually out of time right now, but I think I can take one more question. Uh, and, and we will get back to you. My staff and I actually go through these and, and look at, uh, the questions are all important to me, and, and we will respond to every one of you. Uh, let's take, uh, our last caller of the evening.
Sure, our last caller is from Maine. We've got Tom from Maine. Tom, you're on the line with Senator Livis.
Hi, Tom.
Senator, thank you for taking my call. I'll try to make it quick, because I, uh, just the dollars and cents. Isn't it a lot cheaper to keep them in Broome Development than put them in jail?
Yeah.
Because that's where they're gonna end up if they don't take their medication.
Well, these, the, the, the sixty folks, dangerous pedophiles that are there, yes. There's no question about it. Um, uh, it, it is, it is a better place for them to be, and, and to, to be put in the jail, it's gonna cost a fortune. Because the, the jails aren't really prepared to handle this type of, of client. You know, we have, uh, wonderful staff that are, that are trained, that handle these folks, and, and they do it on a regular basis. And, um, they've done an outstanding job, and certainly, uh, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, that that continues. Um, let me thank everybody for joining us this evening. Uh, Manny, I see that we had, um, um, well over five or six thousand on the line this evening, which is great. Um, the last question, by the way, is, uh, let's see. The most helpful state agency, you think is the Department of Health, and the least helpful state agency is, um, Motor Vehicle and Tax and Finance. So I thought I'd share that with you. Listen, this is, uh, Tom Livis. I want to say thank you for joining me this evening. Um, if you're still on the line, please, uh, there'll be a recording. Uh, leave your, leave your message. We'll get back to you. Uh, I want to thank you. We'll be doing more of these in the upcoming legislative session. Uh, thank you for joining my telephone town hall. You have a wonderful evening and a great Thanksgiving. Uh, thank you for joining my telephone town hall, you have a wonderful evening and a great Thanksgiving.